Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the February 24th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm Planning and Zoning Commission Chair James Kirkpatrick. At this time, I'd like to ask that you put your cell phones, electronic devices, either turn them off or put them on silent. Please note this meeting is being recorded. For those of you that have not been with us before, the Planning and Zoning Commission is comprised of seven members. Five members are residents of the City of Burlington and are appointed by the City Council. Two members are residents of the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction and are appointed by the Alamance County Commissioners for tonight's public comments. To address the commission in this meeting, please wait until called upon by the chair and address the commission from the podium. Comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes, and anyone who speaks must give their name and address. For the record, press and media can ask questions to the commission during the public comment, period. As a reminder, Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory body that makes recommendations to the city council. No decisions are final at the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. Additionally, in the event of a tie vote, 3-3, the motion fails. I'd like to confirm that all commission members and staff, members only agenda are present. Staff, will you please conduct a roll call of the commission and staff?
Chair Kirkpatrick.
Present.
Vice Chair Beasley.
Here.
Member Brown.
Here.
Member Mills.
Here.
Member Spacini.
Here.
And absent is Ethan Mayr, Hillary Kettle, Jordan Burton, and Jonathan Sanders. And I'm President Jamie Lawson, and as well as Reed Smith.
So we have a quorum.
We have a quorum.
Perfect. Does anyone have a conflict of interest on this item?
No.
All right. Tonight, can you scroll down to the agenda? Oh, never mind.
We approve the minutes.
Did it wrong minutes?
Yes.
Um.
I move we approve the minutes. Pass me.
Well, I don't even have to ask the question. All in favor? opposed. Item number four, rezoning 24-08, Mr. Chad Huffine, applicant to present a request to rezone property for medium density residential. Don't move the screen.
Look at her.
Medium density residential, MDR, to general business, limited use, GB-LU. The Assembly of Properties is located on the... Stop it. On the south side of Garden Road, frontage is on Westview Terrace. And I got my glasses on. I don't need that. And Fairview Drive, not including the parcel located on the southwest corner of Garden Road and Fairview Road. These parcels consist of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 112636, 112637, 112656, and 112639. Ms. Lawson, we have seen this before relatively, not too long ago, a meeting or two back. Would you like to give us the backstory before Mr. Huffine takes the stand?
Sure. So on the screen, on the PowerPoint, invisible to the public, you'll see the four properties that are highlighted in teal, that the applicant is seeking a rezoning request. And it is a limited use rezoning request. The properties are currently medium density residential. The request has always been a limited use request to general business with specific uses. There was a parcel that was removed, so access were part of this application. The property that I'm sort of highlighting here, that had frontage on Fairview is no longer a part of that application. You'll see in the, on the slide, there's a little synopsis. So the Planning and Zoning Commission first heard the request back in November, November 18th. At that time, there was 67 uses that they had proposed. Out of, I believe, 119. The item was continued to December 16th, 2024, where it was reduced to 39 uses. And then at that time, sorry, the other parcel was removed. Subsequent to the December Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the applicant reduced the request to only ask for multifamily development as a limited use request. So the Planning and Zoning Commission did not hear the application subject to that. That is consistent with our unified development ordinance standards and procedures. An applicant can reduce the number of requested number of uses and not necessarily return back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, the city council did hold a public hearing on this item on January 21st, 2025, and did not take action on the application, but did remain it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for further consideration.
Okay.
So I'll just also show, so this was the original request. Oops. But I had a nice slide. Did I get that off? I'll pull it up in a minute if I can. But this was the original request. Then we went down to 67 to 39, and now you're left with considering multifamily lines only, which is also an allowable use under the current zoning. The density of the rezoning does change as part of this request.
The density, because you can do multifamily in medium density, and you can do multifamily under this zoning, and the density between the two is what and what?
Roughly, under the current zoning, roughly five units, and we're talking about multifamily only, to 24, roughly 24 units, under the general business zoning category.
Okay.
I do want to know a provision that's in the UDO that, you know, that may be important to highlight here for all of the parties. The UDO Section 5.5, 5I stipulates, and this is within our multifamily design standards, that buildings can only have a maximum height of two stories or 18 feet within 100 feet of a lot within existing single-family intact residence as well. So I'm bringing this up. We haven't seen a development plan or a concept, but should, should a development exceed the two stories, the buildings would have to be set back at least 100 feet. And this would be standard provision under any application that's coming in for multifamily development under the UDO.
Okay. You good?
I am good.
Mr. Huffine, Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Mr. Kirkpatrick, members of the commission, my name is Lawson Brown. I practice law with the Vernon Law Firm, where I am in my 49th year, 49 and a half years across the street, 522 South Lexington Avenue. I live at 2403 Oakwood Drive, Burlington, NC, and have worked not only as chairman of the Board of Adjustment here in City of Burlington for 15 years, many years ago, but have worked on a number of projects, been blessed with good clients to represent. Tonight, it's my pleasure to represent Dave Morton Enterprise LLC. Dave Morton is probably best known for Holly Hill Mall, the reinventing of that project, and also a number of commercial shopping centers. He was unable to be here tonight because he's celebrating his 60th birthday out of the country, actually. So he sends his regrets. I got involved in this a little bit before the public hearing at the city council stage, so I wasn't involved in the original planning of that. Mr. Huffine, very capable, had spearheaded that effort for Mr. Morton's LLC. After discussion with Ms. Lawson and with Mr. Huffine and Mr. Morton, it was determined that really all that he was asking for was the apartment in the business limited use. My experience with the business limited use was started with the City of Burlington, work with Jamie, who educated me very well about four years ago when we did a project and came before you, before it went to the council, on Whitefield Lane, south of the interstate. I had not had the familiarity with limited use zoning, a lot of experience with conditional zoning, and a lot of experience with the properties in this immediate area. Not that it gives me any great insight, because you see these sorts of requests all the time. I did work very closely 20 years ago with CBL and Associates on Alamance Crossing, which with retail has not been as successful the last few years as everybody would like, obviously. But we made special effort at that time to move away from the neighborhood that is contiguous to this particular development as well. I don't recall exactly, and I couldn't tell from my file, why exactly there was an entrance into, off of Boone Station Drive to this particular neighborhood, but I think it was related to what Mr. Harkrader, who was the planning director at that time, had requested. So we were sensitive to that when we did that planning. I always caution any developer client to be cautious with any development of neighborhoods and try to look at the overall picture. There are a number of reasons that this, I think, should be recommended to the city council. When we got to the city council, there was some concern, and I, quite frankly, I think perhaps some confusion, because a lot of us, old gray-headed folks, have been used to conditional zoning, where you present a site plan, and I've worked with Mike Mills on a number of projects over the last 49 years, that he understands conditional zoning. Y'all understand conditional zoning. This limited use was something new to me, as I said earlier. I think it is a wonderful planning tool, and in this particular case, I think it is going to work extremely well. What you had, but came before you before, was a smorgasbord of uses that could be allowed. We are limiting this use to the multifamily that's allowed in the limited use business multifamily. I think that's very, very important. The second major factor was, as Jamie Lawson indicated, was the elimination of the property on the Fairview Drive. In the council meeting, I didn't really emphasize the point that with 100 or fewer units, whether it's single-family residential or whether it's apartments, there's only one entrance that can be required of the city or the DOT. So this project, conceptually, will have one entrance off of Garden Road and will not be intruding into the neighborhood except to the extent that it borders. And the safety factor there is the fact that Ms. Lawson amply pointed out that there is a great buffer zone between that. Now, will it be a change? Yes, it will be a change. I mean, I did the apartments that were further out on Kirkpatrick Road some 35 years ago, and, you know, the neighbors were very concerned, and the church was very concerned, that that particular project would be a major concern. I think that has proven not to be the case, because the developer did it correctly, and the traffic has adjusted accordingly. There are a number of reasons that I think that this is an appropriate zoning for this property. The present owner, Mr. Smith, I was familiar with him, and we did Alamance Crossing years ago, and he did not want to include his property in that particular development, which was fine, but since that time, it's set there vacant. Doug Avent, who I remember, Mike may remember, was an appraiser here in town. He sat on this commission, and he said that one of the greatest things that affected value of property is the vacancy of a property, because you don't know what's going to happen. Well, this request, if allowed, will cure that issue, so that we will know what will go on this property. It's going to be about 54 units maximum on the property, and the building concept will face the northwest corner of this property and be located because of the separation required by the UDO, will require the separation that Ms. Lawson has so amply indicated. First of all, I want to talk about the rezoning being consistent with the future land use plan. Y'all were involved in the land use plan. Some of you were on the commission when that process came through. The adoption of the land use comprehensive plan or future plan, as you know, requires multiple public meetings, multiple input sessions, et cetera, and it then comes before this commission, and then it goes to city council. So you have public hearings and public input over a period of six to 12 months. I say that because this plan is consistent with the future land use plan that you endorsed and that the city council has adopted. So the present zoning of the property is actually inconsistent with that future land use plan. Thirdly, it is a logical extension of existing zoning. To the north of this property, across Boone Station Drive, you have the apartments that Seth Coker, and actually, I represented his entity at that time. So again, we were sensitive to what the neighborhood concerns were. It was very difficult to address those concerns in that particular zoning, because Garden Road left such an open space. There were about six houses or so, five houses along there, that were affected by looking out on the street. That's not the case here. But that said, if multifamily apartments are allowed on this particular property, it is just a logical extension of the zoning across the street, except that this particular instant request, there is a lower density than what is across the street. So I would submit to you that it is a logical extension of the existing zoning in that area. While it's not within your province to really determine the highest and best use of property, that's more of an appraisal issue, it is a land planning concept that I think you cannot ignore, and this is the highest and best use of this property. Fifthly, it serves as a, historically, this commission and the city council and other commissions and other councils have used multifamily housing, residential, residential zoning of multifamily as a buffer between single-family residences that are in the neighborhood that is located to the southeast, and the businesses that are across the way are contiguous. So you have used that, as well as all other planning boards, planning commissions, and councils. I am always delighted to come when I have, when the client has a staff recommendation, and tonight, we have the staff recommendation, and that is consistent with the long-range plan. There always is a concern in any developer's mind of whether there's public infrastructure available, and because Burlington has spent as much money as they have being proactive in their planning on water and sewer, there is water and sewer in that area, so there's adequate water and sewer infrastructure for that. While I don't think it's a planning consideration, if there are 50 units there and under the present system development fee that is, goes to the utility fund for the City of Burlington, the economics of this would be substantial. Assuming $7,000 per unit, that'd be about a $350,000 positive for the utility fund. Again, I don't think that's a planning consideration, but I think it's a policy consideration. In summary, I guess go back to the one entrance off Garden Road, no entrances into the neighborhood and the separation. And Mr. Huffine is here to answer any technical questions that you may have. But again, this was not a conditional zoning where we presented a plan, but was a limited use business that this commission and this council has decided is the best way for land planning in the City of Burlington. And I think everything I've articulated is consistent with those points. I'm happy to answer any questions, as you might. If those neighbors speak in opposition, which I anticipate they will, I would like just a three-minute rebuttal, if that's appropriate.
Hold right there, Mr. Brown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions on the right for Mr. Brown.
I got some. I may want to wait to hear.
Well, Chad, would you stand up as well, please, because I have a question for you. Go ahead, Mike.
Well, I think you did answer one of my questions, Lawson. You said there would be a driveway onto Garden Road.
That is correct.
And that's the only driveway?
That is correct.
That's the only driveway. And the other thing, and please help me out here, Jamie. At the city council meeting the other night, they kept talking about there was going to be a 40-foot buffer going around the perimeter, I guess, of the property, which I think is set aside by the UDO. I guess my question is, is there, has there been any conversation with the homeowners? And I know we, as a group, have sat here on other zoning requests, and there's been not just a typical UDO landscaping, but an enhanced version, I would assume, that, I guess, the typical UDO just has a certain amount of trees planted, so many feet apart and all that. And the other ones we've seen in other developments, they've come in with a berm and evergreen trees and all that stuff to provide more of a true buffer to limit visibility from the houses that are there. And this, has this been discussed with the homeowners or anything, or what's, I guess, what is the plan? And I have to get a shout out to Harold Olent, because he had a good idea at the city council meeting, that we should have had a plan. Already been nice to have a plan, to look at, to see the buildings, the landscaping, the parking, where the dumpsters going and all that stuff.
But I don't think it's required, Mike.
It's not required. It's that it will be very helpful.
But it's not required.
I know, but that's why we hear the fourth thumb. But anyhow.
Agreed.
Has anybody, is there any conversation with the properties on this kind of enhanced berm, and will the berm go around the perimeter of the property like I'm assuming it's going to go, or?
I think it would be beneficial, Mr. Mills, if Ms. Lawson can state what those requirements are, and to see if you, as a group, feel comfortable with that.
But Chad, has there been any conversation with the developer, or Ms. Lawson may know, has there been any conversation about enhancing that buffer, which is ultimately what Mike's asking? The answer is no. Chad, the answer is no.
So Chad Huffine, 505 East Davis Street, for the record. So in conversations with the adjoining property owners, we've discussed trees, discussed the need to have the existing trees preserved, and as part of the UDO's requirement for buffering, we're going to be either planting additional plants to supplement existing vegetation, or we're going to be putting plants where there aren't any plants to fulfill the UDO landscape requirements.
And I guess that's what I was kind of asking. You can fulfill the UDO landscaping requirement, but it's still not screening the houses from this apartment complex. That's why, is there any plans to enhance that buffer to where there will be a certain type evergreen tree planted, so many feet apart or staggered, and earth and berm put in to really restrict the visibility? I know you can meet the UDO requirement, but to give the property owners a kind of assurance that, because they've been here four or five times religiously, and to give them some kind of guarantee or to help them see, or I guess not see, the building to be put in?
Unfortunately, with the absence of conditional zoning, I cannot make that commitment. What I can say is that throughout our entire career, working with this particular customer, we have gone above and beyond in every case, and I would not see that changing going forward. That's really all I can say about what the plan would be, Mike.
And I guess, and I know we're not the governor in power, but so I guess, you know, whatever happens here, they consider going to city council again, but I guess, what assurance does anybody have? I mean, it's nice to have a plan, to say, this is what we're going to put in, and we approve, and if we do approve the rezoning request, there it is, a nice colored plan of what y'all will put in, and you're saying y'all cannot do that?
We're not required to do that. The City of Burlington uses the limited use zoning, and in this case, that's the path we've chosen to go through for the rezoning request. A plan is not required, and it's not appropriate. I don't even think that it's allowable in the process for limited use. So I'll let Jamie comment to that, because there is a lot of confusion about the absence of the draw.
I know we've sat here in the brief months that I've been on the board, there have been rezoning requests that come in, and maybe it was called, maybe plan development, maybe that's what it was. So if it's plan development, you have a nice plan. In this particular case, if it is approved to be rezoned, then no one knows what's going out there until it's under construction. Holy crap.
Not necessarily, but you hit the ball right on the head. The option, the other applications that you have seen that have exemplified where the landscaping is going to be, the enhancements to landscaping, they're all through the other type of zoning. You know, we allow plan development rezoning applications as part of the UDO by right. So I think maybe your question is more, have you considered a plan development application to address some of these concerns?
Is that an option? Could that go to the challenge?
Anyone can come in with a plan development application, so it's not, you know, staff isn't requiring something like that. It's up to the applicant to decide which type of rezoning they think is appropriate for their site.
Okay. Any, go ahead.
And Mike, the jurisdiction that I'm an employee of, the City of Meban, in addition to being with the law firm, we don't have limited use. So Jamie educated me on that process, and I think it would be important for her to tell us, and you in particular, what is the buffering requirement. I mean, she's indicated on the building, it can't be within 100 feet, so.
So there's a difference, the two differences that we're referring to. The required buffer, if you look at that map that's on the PowerPoint, the required buffer between lands that are general business, which is what they're proposing the zoning to be, to the medium density residential, is a 40-foot buffer. So that is correct. It's a type D 40-foot buffer. There is the opportunity to... There is the opportunity to reduce that buffer by 30 feet, by 10 feet, to a 30-foot buffer if the applicant wants to install a fence or have a berm, but those are just questionary as well. The requirement, however, would be a 40-foot buffer along those perimeters there, and where it butts the blue shade, which is the O and I, it would reduce to a 30-foot buffer. That can also be reduced down by 10 feet with the same provisions, but that's what the required buffer would be. The other thing that I refer to under the UDO is specific to multifamily development under our design standards. There's a lot of different design standards that an applicant would have to meet when they are building multifamily as well as partial and other uses. And so as part of a site plan development, if the buildings are to exceed three stories or two, three stories, they would, the buildings would have to be set back at least 100 feet. That does not mean that the entire 100 feet is a buffer requirement. It just means that there's a separation requirement between the building and the parcels. So it's an added enhancement specific to multifamily.
But it doesn't, you don't have to plan anything in that 100. It could go by the, whatever the type, you said type D?
Type D is a requirement along the perimeter.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
You good with your question, Mike?
Yeah, I would like to say thanks for just, for at least getting the one access on the Garden Road. That would help out, I would assume, some of the traffic concern the neighbors have with people cutting through.
And that takes care, and that takes care of one of my questions.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, right now, I'm good, Jamie.
Lee, you got any questions?
Just from out of curiosity, you said for general business, limited use versus, what is this, medium-density residential?
Yeah.
The buffer is 40 feet or 30 feet with a berm and fence. Is that correct?
It's, the buffer is 40 feet.
Or?
Or.
30 feet? With a berm or a fence.
Correct.
All right. And then it reduces, if general business versus up against the O and I, it would be 30 feet or 20 feet with a berm or fence.
Yes, sir.
All right. At what point, just playing hypotheticals here, the O and I, that lot that was left out of this, I believe, or maybe not, the O and I is up at lot number 112656 and partially of 112637. Would that 30-foot berm come down along the cul-de-sac, or does it cut off at the top of the cul-de-sac?
Let me see if I can zoom over there a little bit. I can measure that. The property lawn is at the top of the cul-de-sac. My mother owns that O and I lot.
Okay, but.
So essentially, if you're looking at this map.
Thank you.
It's a little disjointed, and we would have to figure, you know, some things like this, we get figured out during the TRC process.
Yeah, it looks to me like the berm would come from where it.
It's frontage here. So technically, we would want to see a full 40-foot buffer or 30-foot reduction that would, that would really not apply to this area. But I would think the applicant would want it to be consistent across the board, even if, even if it wasn't a requirement there.
Thank you.
That's my own opinion. I can't speak for the other.
I understand.
I was going to totally agree with you. So in a concept planning case, we would bring the buffer into a kind of an intersection with the site-distance triangle that would be at that intersection. The buffer provides the landscaping that's necessary to blend in this development. We respect the site-distance triangle at the intersection, and that's going to coincidentally be around 35 feet in a kind of a triangular shape. So the 30-foot buffer, the street yard along Garden Road, combined with the 40-foot buffer adjacent to the residential areas, that is basically the most restrictive there is in the ordinance. If we were to use a high-density residential use versus a single-family residential use, the buffer would not be any more restrictive than the 40-foot type D. In the city's ordinances, you have A, B, C, and D buffers, with D being the most intense and the widest. And that's what we're proposing to do, if not more than that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You've already answered my question regarding the Westview Terrace piece. There is no entrance coming in or out of Westview Terrace guaranteed 100%.
That is correct.
Not to change under any circumstance whatsoever, guaranteed. Cross your heart and hope to die.
That is correct.
Thank you. Charles? I was going to make a pinky swear, but. It is now.
Only real question I have, I'm speaking out of ignorance here, because I have not had a chance to go back and review the council meeting on the 21st. I was traveling that week before and have not bothered to watch the YouTube video. Did they offer any other specific comments as to why they kicked this back to?
I think they wanted, you know, I can't speak for the council, but I think they want an opportunity for this revision to come back to the planning and zoning commission since there was a significant adjustment since the applicant was here last.
I think it was the lack of clarity that we had. I think it's the lack of clarity that we had, because there was a multitude of uses that were still on the table the last time it was here. And now it's just one, is my opinion.
Yes, just one point of clarity. I know we've already talked about this like five times, but the entrances, you had said that for this type of residential, it was 50 or less that needs one entrance, or?
100.
100, okay.
100.
And that clears that up.
100. And North Carolina legislature passed that law probably three years ago, and it came in, comes into play in my planning world more often than the single-family as opposed to multifamily. But one entrance is all that can be required of 99 or fewer. Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
As we do this, we got three minutes. I know they got longer, but they were presenting their project. They'll only have three minutes once we start this. Bree. Good? This side of the room? On this project? You got three minutes.
I usually sum up.
And once we start this, once somebody says traffic, let the traffic die?
We got one thing we should talk about.
Okay, and then what, and then we'll move on to the next, but.
I'll start. I'll go back this time.
Name and address, please.
Angela Bostic, 1233 Westview Terrace.
Thank you.
Individual area use of our area in question. Can you give me a little bit more of a representation of what you're looking at as opposed to this? So in this first map, this first image, you'll see the rest of our neighborhood in its entirety outlined in blue. This is the size of our neighborhood. The lots in question are outlined in dark orange. So you can see the disparity in the size of the rest of our neighborhood in the area in which they're talking about adding 50-something apartments. And this is why we would, one reason. The density is one reason we would like to keep this as a medium-density residential. The second image, you can see Garden Road, and you'll see a green arrow to indicate a Garden Road entrance. And we have the understanding that there will not be a left turn allowed out of that entrance. And the red arrows show that a path, that a vehicle, any resident of that complex would have to take to make a left turn. And as you can see, it goes through our neighborhood. And we won't, we cannot, absolutely cannot discount the number of people that turn to come up Westview thinking that they can get to that light at Garden Road and Boone Station daily. The third image, the blue circle is our neighborhood. All of the yellow circles are apartment complexes. As you can see, we're, again, dense with apartment complexes. So again, part of this is why we ask to leave our neighborhood as a medium-density residential and limit the number of units to five per acre. And we have heard that it may be a senior living complex. Let me clearly state for the record, that does not mean squat for traffic. My mother is 88, my stepfather is 91. They are out and about daily. So we don't think that a senior living is going to affect the traffic impact at all. You're welcome.
Anyone on this side of the room who would like to speak on this project? Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to speak on traffic.
Yes, ma'am. Sure.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Lucy Saken. I live at 1226 Fairview Drive. I've spoken with you several times before, but I'd like to reiterate my concerns about the traffic increase if you green-light a rezoning change on this parcel. As it stands as a medium-density property, it would allow for living spaces for 13 units and up to 26 additional people. That alone would almost double the traffic on our street and off of Garden Road. The intersection of Garden and Boone Station Road is already congested at high-traffic times. There will be greater congestion with the additional units and a greater chance for accidents and loss of life. Garden Road and Boone Station Drive are roads that can handle traffic, and there is a stoplight to help control the flow. But the traffic on Fairview Drive and possibly Westview Terrace will dramatically increase, and our streets were not built to withstand it. Our road is a narrow, old country road built over 50 years ago. It is, it only had 10 houses at the time. It's only 20 feet wide with no lane divisions. There's a sharp curve with no traffic table to slow traffic down. Our neighborhood has doubled in size and throughway traffic has been added between Boone Station and Garden Road. It's nearly impossible around Christmas Eve or Thanksgiving to get out of our driveways or turn onto Garden Road. If you can imagine with so many more people there using our roads, it will be a tremendous traffic jam right there. And don't think that they won't turn, they will turn on our roads. They definitely will, since they can't turn left. Another thing to consider are the two houses at the entrance to Garden Road and Fairview Drive. They only have 40 feet of driveway between the road and their house. And with people turning in, they very well could turn into their house. They could lose control and crash into their house. It's something to consider, loss of life. We're not against progress, but we do want to maintain the quality of life that living in a residential neighborhood should afford. Rezoning that property so you can cram as many units as possible to make as much money as possible for the owner is not really being a good citizen to the current residents. Stay within the boundaries of the residential atmosphere and build a reasonable amount of units that won't overburn the traffic and quality of life in this area. I ask you to go out and walk on the property. It is so small considering trying to cram 100 units on it. It is a very small piece of land. I ask you, please, to not grant the request for rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, yes, ma'am.
I just, sorry, Melissa Mills, 1253 Fairview Drive. I just wanted to speak very quickly. Two of our neighbors, the two on the intersection of Fairview Drive and Garden Road, one of them has to take time off work every time we have one of these meetings because he works nights, and the other one is in the emergency room at the hospital tonight. So I didn't want you to think they didn't care about this, but they are just unable to be here tonight to speak for themselves. So I thank Ms. Saken for speaking for them about their concerns regarding the traffic as they're unable to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room? No, come on.
Charles Austin, 1233 Westview Terrace.
Yes, sir.
My fifth trip down here to this beautiful room you guys have. I'd like to just echo a couple of things. One thing that hadn't come up, dumpsters, we don't want a bunch of overflowing dumpsters with a bunch of garbage and rats running around. That's got to be a concern. I don't know if they're planning on a chute or something, but the dumpsters we have around us, we have to hear them slamming all the time, and I really don't want to hear that. The other thing I'd like to point out, like Ms. Saken said, is there's no reason they can't build a townhouse or, what was it, 14, 15 units now? Just the fact that he hasn't built anything there doesn't give him the right to demand that he gets to build wherever he wants there. I know it's down, but it's 60-some units, actually, 68 units potentially. The acreage, it still says 2.2. This is my fifth trip. Why does it say 2.2? It's 2.86 acres. That's all I got there.
We are concerned about the sandation, because we live right at the end of the cul-de-sac. So he sits looking out our front window toward all day and would look at this apartment building.
Fair enough.
I work in the end, and I would do the exact same thing.
Fair enough. Anything you want to readdress, Mr. Brown?
Two, three items. It's not 100 units. It's going to be in the 50 to 55 units. 54 is about what this acreage will allow. We have made substantial changes by eliminating that lot that came over into Fairview. We've diminished the entrance so there will not be any access, pinky swear, into the residential neighborhood. I believe that I've made my seven or eight points as to why that should be recommended to the city council, and I certainly appreciate y'all's time and effort, because the pay's not too good, as I recall.
I can make one comment. Rezoning and their number of units based on double occupancy per unit would triple, in that unit, triple the number of residents just within those units of our entire neighborhood.
Thank you. Anything to discuss?
Yeah, I got a question for, I guess for Chad, and maybe the lady back here. You may, can you hand it out your information here? And then you mentioned the driveway on the Garden Road. And you mentioned that it won't be any left coming out of that. How, is that, have you already decided on the driveway design, Chad?
We've not permitted that, and we would certainly be asking for full access, full movement access. Traditionally, a right-in, right-out is what's going to be. That would be the only thing I could commit to. It'd be up to the department to tell us if we were able to have a full movement access connection there.
But you normally apply for full access and then?
We will.
Y'all work out the details. So you're going to apply for full access with appropriate turn lanes and all that?
Absolutely. The right-in, right-out diminishes the ability for the, I'd say, the residents to go back and fill on. And so we would try to, as we would with. And so we would try to, as we would with every project, try to petition for the full movement connectivity.
And I think, I know we, we, we promised and we pinky swore and everything else.
That was on, that was on the, the neighborhood.
On the neighborhood. But sometimes when we do that, we may be, or the neighborhood could be setting themselves up for this type movement. If we, if we had the, I'm just saying, if we had the driveway out to Westview, that could help out ease some of the situation. But with that being said, it's going to be tied in there with full access, just based on the spacing and what's out there, out there now. But you're going to apply for full, full access, left turns and all that stuff to, and that would allow you to come out with, to head towards, I guess, towards St. Mark's Church.
That's right. That's correct.
I wanted to ask you to look at the lanes. I purposely included the current lane situation. They would be turning left right there at the light. Into a left-turning lane light. There's a left-turn lane at that light.
Well, yeah, but they, they can't go into the light. It's probably going to be a very small window about where the taper for the left turn begins. That's to be about where your full access will, could be. Because you can't have, like you said, you can't have it down to the left turn lane that goes into Boone Station Road. But you do have a little area right there where the left turn lane begins. Very, very small area, but it does push you, put you close to Garden Road. Now, we, I know you won't be allowed to go into the left turn lane of Boone Station. That would not be allowed.
Can I ask if that entrance can be within that buffer zone? Is that allowed? Because that would put it to get away from that turn lane.
Which buffer zone?
Buffer zone next to Luis Parella's home. Are you, are you referring to?
That would put it too close to the curb.
Ma'am, are you referring to putting it closer to? Yeah, the house that's on that corner. It would be very close, right next to their lot. It can be in that buffer zone in order to avoid that turn. It would be right next to.
Yeah, that would be something to also.
This is all speculation. Can we have a traffic impact analysis? Which I know comes later, but.
If you mean right-in, right-out, half the people going or coming or going to that place are a drive-through neighbor. They're looping around on the inside to get the car.
That, that part, that, that is, that is correct.
We're turning around on the driveway to maybe use.
Which, they do that already. They pull in, turn around. They pull in our driveway at the end of the cul-de-sac because they don't realize they can't get to the light.
So you can't get the 70 that way to pull traffic?
You can't get the Garden Road, uh, whiskey.
Wait a minute. Let's, let's.
Sorry.
Back on point. Any more questions, Mike?
Right now, no.
Lee?
No.
John?
Yes, ma'am. Right. Yes. Jamie, ever since we've been looking at this, I've always wondered, and even before being on this committee, I've wondered about this cut through for Fairview. That's not really a cut through. And forgive my ignorance, but, and maybe the residents currently don't want that, but could there ever be consideration to close the entrance at Boone Station Drive?
Yes, please.
I mean, I feel like that would solve.
Yeah, I thought it was a fire park thing.
That road did not always go for.
I thought they had put it in.
I mean, you have Mack House and a lake, 1400 homes and one entrance, so.
Yeah, I mean, that analysis isn't part of this discussion.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
Um, we are planning and zoning, and we are land use. That is our concern. That is what we do. We've heard from the residents, we've heard from the planning staff. Everybody knows what the planning department's recommendation is. Is there a motion?
Sir?
Ma'am?
One more hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see, I'm sorry, I did not see it. I apologize to you, sir. I did not see it. Please accept, please accept my apology.
Yes, sir.
Please go ahead.
My name is Terry Dammer, and I live at 3165 Ray Drive in Burlington.
Yes.
My dad is Bill Greyston. He lives at 1268 Westview Drive, which is on the corner of Westview and Fairview. And he's been there since, well, the house was built in 1965, so he's been there the whole time. And he's, he'll be 92 in July, and he still drives. And he's very mobile, gets out and does whatever he wants to. But the amount of traffic that they're talking about is a concern to me with him, you know, still continuing to drive and have a productive.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that's my concern, is, is the amount of traffic it would cause with him.
I understand.
And so, I just want to say, thank you.
Anyone else? And I apologize again for missing you, Sean.
Just one more question. At the city council meeting, it was mentioned, I think it was supported, who stood up to support it now, but it mentions it'd be senior, senior living units. Is that correct?
It, it is going to be senior targeted apartments. The discussion with the client is that that is the target. And if it were conditional, I could tell you about the, the studio that's going to be in there and the hair, hairdresser that's coming in once a week at a spot, blah, blah, blah. But it's not conditional, so, but it is going to be senior targeted apartments.
Thank you, Allison. We've heard from the crowd, we've heard from the city.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll be the bad guy. I'd like to move option one approved consistent with LUP. I make a motion to recommend approval to request, the request to rezon property from medium-density residential, MDR, to general business limited use, GBLU. The Assembly of Properties is located on the south side of Garden Road with frontage on Westview Terrace. These parcels consist of Alamance County tax identification numbers 112636, 112637, 112656, and 112639. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in section four land use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to be regional commercial. The request is compatible with other residential zoning districts and land uses in the area which encourage a variety of housing options. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the general business limited use request only allows for multifamily residential development. Public infrastructure, water, and sewer is available along Garden Road. This property serves as a buffer between the commercial land uses along Garden Road and the adjacent residential neighborhood. Future use of the property should complement the land use pattern of the area and be context sensitive to the adjacent residential neighborhood. Any future development will be required to comply with the city's unified development ordinance.
There's a motion on, on the floor. Is there a second? Second? There's a motion and a second. Will the city staff please roll call the vote?
Sure. Chair for Patrick?
Approved.
Vice Chair Beasley?
Approved.
Member Round?
Approved.
Member Mills?
I'm not approve.
And Member Spatini?
Approved.
Thank you very much, John.
Any more business to come before this commission?
Saken, S. S. C. O. N.
No, sir? Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, I'm sorry, move.
So move and some motion and a second?
It's obvious.
We're done.